You okay?
Yep, thank you.
Alright, District Mission Statement. Mark would you like to read that?
Sure. The mission of the Exeter West Greenwich Regional School District is to empower students to contribute to school and community by providing substantial learning experiences in a safe, trusting, and motivating environment.
Thank you. Okay, we have open forum. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on something that's not on the agenda, you may do so now. Okay, let's see. No one's not here. No presentation to report. Okay. Nothing too important, the student monthly report, so we have a consent agenda.
The only items are the approval of our regular meeting executive session minutes from November 24th and our monthly bills.
Okay, well, let's see, our executive session minutes. Any questions on the bill? Okay, can we have a, so we need a motion. Is someone who is here? Do we have a second? Second? Okay. All in favor?
Consent agenda, the latest meeting.
I pulled them. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Can we have abstentions?
I thought that was with consent agenda with the exception, with the exception.
Oh, sorry. Yep, yep, okay.
So if we all vote no, abstentions?
Yes, everybody voted no. Sorry. Okay. Now we'll vote on the meeting minutes. Let's see, November 24th, the executive session minutes, November 24th. Can we have a motion for that?
Make a motion that the meeting minutes and the executive meeting minutes of November 24th be approved?
Second. All in favor? Opposed? And abstentions? Abstained due to absence. Okay. We have correspondence, the committee reports. Everybody all set with those? Okay. The 2015-16 budget projection.
Yeah, 2015-16 budget projection.
Please, do you have a question?
Yes, I did actually. Are we comfortable with the surplus numbers?
As far as the projected 2015 cumulative fund?
Yeah. It seems to be a little lower than I remember.
Yes.
Yeah, I, if you recall, a few meetings ago, we did finally incorporate the $214,000 into the regional transportation bonus up above on the revenue, so that adversely impacted. We are waiting for the final audit. Number, the auditor should be back in. She's scheduled to come in Thursday, and we have not got a final number. They're not asking for any audit adjustments, but I'm pretty confident in that number. As far as the fund balance goes, I mean, that's the lowest, the cumulative fund balance, that's the lowest it's been probably for the board in a couple of years. But we're monitoring it, you know, the expenses are, we're doing a great job managing that, and I'll definitely let you know if there's something, but...
I mean, this is, you know, it caught my eye, it's, you know, lower than where I ever dreamed it should be, and, you know, and I know we have a plan to build it up, but...
Right.
This is, you know, this kind of caught my surprise.
Yeah, and the, again, and part of it is the reporting, you know, we felt that it was more important to show the $200,000...
Sorry?
That's okay. The $200,000 that we take available from surplus on the revenue side, in the past, we always didn't show that hitting the bottom line until kind of the end of the year after we were rolling, but we, I thought it was more important at discussions with the treasurer and superintendent to kind of get that out in front.
Okay.
So, I'm comfortable.
Okay.
But we're learning to say no.
Yeah, that's why I wrote a suggestion.
After years of saying yes, so...
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I ask a question about superintendent report? Have we gotten there yet?
Yep, we're gonna do that next, yep. So monthly, well, we have monthly subcommittee reports. Do they have any report out? Okay, monthly status reports. Okay, go ahead Cheryl.
Well, let's see, I don't know if you want to talk about your report first. I'm jumping ahead of the game. Okay, well, I was just curious about the standard space and how, I don't know how far along you are in the planning process, but just the grade levels and, I don't know, are we gonna get any more information about that as it goes along?
Yes.
Okay.
It's an item that's addressed in the strategic plan. This is the base grading for grades three through six at Metcalfe. They've been engaged in conversations a little bit last year, but they've really started to go at it strong this year. They've mapped out a plan for continuing to engage the faculty. They've mapped out a plan for parent communications, which includes the beginning of the next school year, but not the start, that's right, it will go into that point. And they've also targeted a date in May, I believe it's the first meeting. I have it written down somewhere for our follow-up school committee presentation as well.
So it's not seven, eight, it's just three through six?
Three to six.
Okay.
Seven and eight. So the plan is that we start with three to six, and then we stagger in seven through eight after that, and that's where we are in the process, consistent with what we laid out in the strategic plan as well.
Anyone else have any questions?
I do, the Serpiston Gyms and Bobs, the whole recycling issue? Can I just make a comment? The Exeter West Greenwich Hoops, recreational league plays here on Saturday, very, very busy gym, and there's no recycling buckets in the senior high, so if that could be addressed?
It's part of the whole issue that we were talking about, it's the lack of...
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it's been or two could be placed out there.
We need a lot more than one or two.
I'm sure we do, however, we have none.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, just to make you aware, I don't know about Wallo, but I know about senior high they had none the last several weeks.
The history of that is typically different clubs have taken on, and actually, one of, so I met with, I actually toured a school in Barrington today, if the committee would indulge me here for a moment. And anybody who knew Ajidia Verano, like, she was like, she's awesome. And then she went and got, as I told her today, then she went and got a job that paid, so she works for Narragansett Inn or Rhode Island Resource, and she was there today. And that's kind of what we're trying to re-establish. And it, it's one of those things that, I don't think there's an administrator who doesn't want to do it, it's just like building the capacity, and it's really gotta be, you know, kind of grassroots-based, and they have a really neat model that they're using now, so that's what we're going to try and incorporate. And one of the things we're talking about is the recruiting.
I know we have recycling, but unfortunately I don't consider members, but...
Yes, so that's what I mean, it runs hot and cold, and then there's, there's some different groups that take it on, whether it's a senior project or a special project, and it just is not, it's not high enough on the radar where it needs to be, and I think, you know, we can return, we can, it's certainly...
I'm just wondering if also the groups that rent our facilities, like EWG Hoops, if we can put to stipulation that part of their renting from us using our facilities is to put out several recycling bins, it should take two minutes. You know, board members, I've talked to them, and they're in agreement, so very simple solution at least for that one.
There's plenty, I, there's, just, you know, and it's just sustainability, you know, we were looking at it, it's kind of, you know, I can't help but think that there's not a way to weave a student project from right through, you know, and keep that continuity, that's why I think it's been a little bit rocky.
And part of our discussions were beyond the bins, because we could put the bins out, we actually have bins in certain areas, it's what happens to the bins when they're emptied, and what happens to the disposal, you know, when it leaves this facility, so...
Several years ago, prior to you being on the committee gym, we had had many discussions and ended up getting this additional, whatever you call those, huge bins, thank you, huge dumpsters specifically for recycling materials.
Yeah.
And that was many years ago. That's when Ajidia started over at Wallo with the teachers and the guys, and it was a big project.
So, so just, it will be fourth time in a row, we need to meet with the company, with MTG, who does our disposal, and there's a calculation in the meeting, you know, I think in the superintendent and in my report, we reference Rhode Island Resources here, it's gonna take some coordination with the disposal company, it's gonna take a little bit of coordination with the towns, and then we can start getting credit, and then once we establish that, then that kind of sustains the funding for any initiatives that we want to do for that, so. And it's peanuts, but it's worth it, you know, if it's a couple of thousand dollars a year, then you can maybe incentivize people to purchase private sites.
I'm more concerned with environmental impact, actually.
What's that?
The environmental impact.
Yeah, it's huge, it's really, they actually do composting over there, and I can't help but think that with all the farms and maybe, you know, so anyway, it's exciting, it's certainly something I would love to do, and I think everybody would love, we gotta get beeps, and not chickens.
Okay, new business. We have the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities in Hospitals, Student Survey Approval.
So I tried to include every single thing that was connected to this request in the packet, basically, the Rhode Island Student Survey that is being proposed requires school committee approval before it is administered, so I've attached the Rhode Island General Law that requires your approval, and I've given you information about the survey itself, where it's coming from, we're at the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Disabilities in Hospitals, in partnership with the URI Cancer Prevention Research Center is administering this survey this year. I think the information, if you took the time to read the questions, the information is very similar to information that we've received previously on other surveys, but this is the first time that I have been made aware that we need school committee approval for this, because it is separate from the, what is the document that these questions used to be in that annual?
Salt survey.
Was it, is it the salt survey or the, it's on the Infowars, was it the annual survey that was given to parents, kids, and staff members? And we would get the results, and the questions are very similar to what we've been receiving over the past several years, but that survey has been stopped for a period of time, and now they've kind of contracted with these two organizations to sponsor the survey. So it does provide information that we look at, we look for trends, we look for areas that we should be addressing, but I know that there's quite a bit of concern these days over surveys and nothing on the school.
Do you get to actually answer these things honestly? I'm assuming they're probably not even supposed to be...
That's question 62. They address that, question 62, they actually answered that. How odd is we were talking about this earlier?
No, I haven't answered it. It's anonymous, I think.
Is it anonymous?
It's anonymous.
I'm just happy to see the permission stuff, because quite honestly, I mean, my daughter's eleven, and she will not know how to answer most of this. She will not, she has no idea, and I'm not being naive, because I teach middle school, but she has no idea what these drugs are, she has...
Is it juvenile or high?
It says six through 12.
Oh, yeah, six, well, six to 12.
So at this point in time, I mean, when she gets older, but she won't be able to answer it. Meth, amphetamine, cocaine, I mean, ecstasy, Lufy's, she has no idea.
Well, one way of looking at that, I agree, you know, because I'm all over the map on this, on this really, but one way of looking at it is, so if they don't know, they don't have the answer.
Yeah.
But if they do know, that's good information for us to know that it's visible and it's out there. So, you know, it is information, it's something that we can react to, you know, we can infuse that knowledge back into our, you know, same our education programs, health curriculum, whatever. I mean, I, I'd like to know what these kids know, because it'll probably skim and peck out of me, but it's, it is good information, but I also understand the whole issue of, you know, you know, is it really as private as everyone thinks? And I want to believe it is, and they say it is. You know, we have, we do have to stop believing and stop being somewhat naive that our kids don't see this stuff, because they, I'm sure they do to a extent, so. I'm leaning toward, you know, approving this, because there isn't good information to glean from it, with the trust that information is really kept very secret, very anonymous, moving forward.
And parents do have the right to...
Right, which is huge.
Basically, after.
Right. Thank you, Mark, any information is valuable, so a motion.
That's probably what they do, what they use information for, I suppose, and I'm not so sure that it's as private as we all think, I think there's enough in there that you can funnel it down to a certain location anywhere.
Okay, can we have a motion? Make a motion. Second. Doug, can you add the Rhode Island Student Survey? Rhode Island Student Survey? Yep, the Rhode Island General, sorry. I have Rhode Island Student Survey, they call. Please, Student Survey. Chair, second? Second. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye, aye.
Does everybody?
Because there is, there is a way to get out of it.
Okay.
Seven.
Cheryl, did you vote? Yes. I'm sorry. Okay, so seven, zero, thanks for that. Okay, we have policies, 3203 and 3201. There is a change in one of them.
Basically, both of these policies are reflective of the changes that were voted by the residents of the towns for the charter amendment, and we needed to make sure that our policies were updated to reflect those changes. And what I'm passing out is a new version of 3203, and basically, if you compare the two, it's section five of 3203 that's different from your original version, and the sentence that starts with "prior to any subsequent referenda," the new policy says, or the new version says, "The school committee shall mean adopt a revised budget, the revised budget shall be at the minimum the amount necessary to operate the school district for the next fiscal year in compliance with state and federal mandates and contractual obligations." That sentence was adjusted to match the language that was voted in for the charter. It said the same, the message was the same, but we wanted to make sure that the language matched exactly, and that's why it was caught, we had a policy meeting on Monday, yesterday, we caught it, so we made the adjustments and brought it to the table tonight, because, again, the intent was to make sure that our policies match charter, and the language was slightly different, so we just adjusted it to make an exact match.
And I have a question on number three toward the end. I don't think that really said it. I think it might be a little misleading, I'm figuring that in each of both the towns of Exeter and West Greenwich, there would be one polling place, and I don't, I think that should be maybe put in both.
I'm lost.
Number three, number three, the last one, where one votes, not the standing conduct, conduct the voting in a single polling place.
In each. Yeah, in each, Exeter and West Greenwich, so there's ten, one each town.
In each of the towns, maybe, of Exeter and West Greenwich, that way it kind of really emphasizes it.
Well, that language matches the language that was approved for the charter. I really think they should say exactly the same.
I agree.
So, because I look at the charter right now, it says conducting the vote, has a single vote with each Exeter and West Greenwich. It says each and, so we have both of them in there, that's the language that was approved for the charter, so I don't want to start...
In fact, I remember, we actually had a conversation, I think if we had this conversation, we added the word each, just to make sure that it was one each.
One each.
But, because at first, without the word each, it really was like one.
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept policy amendment 3203.
Second. All in favor? Aye, aye.
And 3201, there are some minor changes, but this just basically eliminates the motion to increase or decrease the budget that was stricken from the charter for the vote for the vehicle election.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 3201.
Second. All in favor? Okay, we have unfinished business, reserve capital project update.
I'll just give you a quick update on the STEM park, so Narragansett has completed their work, we're going to do a walkthrough, there is a little bit of debate about a couple of areas where maybe we own through the contract some additional mulch or seeding, but it looks great, they did a really nice job, and there's, you know, it's gonna be really slick, they have the, so right now the balance is running at about $27,000 in the, in the balance to purchase the furnitures and fixtures. There is an element that is up for debate now, part of this project included running the conduit with the, with the poles in them, so that they can just pull the wire if they need to, and, though it's not part of the bid, but sure as heck, you know, there's a little bit of chirping going on regarding, well, what about electricity, what about electricity? And what I'm trying to get, or what they should be considering is, the purchasing of equipment and the electricity, given that it's December, are we looking more realistically at a spring type activity? I don't see why we would be purchasing stuff to put out there and not use and sit out in the weather, but that's a discussion. So, overall, everybody's very pleased and excited for some of this, so that'll be a walkthrough. A meeting with the architect tomorrow, we are going to, it's just the sign off on the tennis courts, that's just paperwork, the security, again, sign off on the security contract, and then just an update on stage points.
So, just a little fresh on the STEM park. It's about the twenties, there's 27,000.
27,000, I count.
So, we gave the extra money, I don't remember how much it was, so they could purchase equipment to use.
Forty-nine, forty-nine, and twenty-four of that, or twenty-five of that was for, to finish the building improvement, which is the park itself.
Okay.
The fixtures are the remaining dollars.
Okay, so the electrical work that they need, are they contemplating digging into that to do the electrical work? Because I'm going to get back to square one, where they don't have any of the...
Yeah, so that's what, you know, that's part of the discussion that we're having right now, is, you know, we're not even in there yet, and there's already like this percolation of, well, maybe we should get the electricity now, and I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that, and I don't necessarily agree with rushing to get fixtures that are just gonna sit in the elements for three or four months, you know, and just kind of see what happens, you know, maybe there's some opportunities that will present themselves.
Is the conduit run with the poles in, so the electricity can be put in?
Correct. And the poles themselves aren't going to be the issue, really, it's going to be tying into the panel. I think the panel is, it's, you've got to go through into the building, up overhead, and then down into the closet, which is over by the gymnasium, I think is the closest panel.
So, I'm just gonna say this, so the purpose of the extra money was so they could have the stations up and running.
Correct.
And we knew that there was gonna be a possibility they would need other things done to the STEM park to make it more what they wanted, and maybe that electricity piece is part of that.
That, exactly.
Like, I don't, I would hate to see, and I don't know how the rest of the people feel, but to spend that much electricity and also they have nothing for the stations.
Right, I think, you know, the spirit of the motion, which I reviewed and shared with the committee, was that the extra dollars were to finish the building improvement, which is the park, and then purchase the fixtures, and the electricity was going to happen. There is, the break needs to be applied to the wants, there's a lot of wanting going on right now in the district, and it's death by the moon and cuts, it only takes four or five projects that cost $10,000 to $15,000, and the next thing you know, like, ah, this is real money. So, and that would be one of them, that electrical project could hit $5,000 in a blink, just because something tells me that that panel is probably almost maxed out over in that area.
Yeah, you have to put it on a sub panel, you have to drill through the building, you gotta run conduit, you gotta tie in all codes, and if you touch a panel that's already existing, and it isn't code, it has to be brought up to code, so yeah, it's expensive to wear.
And the electricity was a later on project, I mean, it's, there's enough there, but, but again, you know, I think, what did we say, January 27th is the capital project, really the meeting, and that's the opportunity to start to say, what are we gonna prioritize? Because there are other things that need to be done.
Correct.
Do we know, I'm sorry, I think I asked before, I'm not sure, does the wireless signal reach that area?
It will reach it, but I think Jeff's concern, you know, is just, you know, you're doing a lesson, then you drop off, you know, 30 kids try to jump on, and it's, you know, and it's just, so you would probably need a boost there. He did say it would, you know, he would recommend putting a, a WAP out there, wireless access point.
Is there any, you know, this is just a, since we're talking about a STEM park, is there any, I don't know how much power would be required out there, probably not a lot, but we could probably do it a little innovative and let the science folks figure out, like, hey, little solo project, or, you know, something like that, to give them the power they need out there. And those relatively inexpensive courtesy of the way the states are funding them, so... Station, yeah. No windows, though. No windows on them.
Good. Okay. All right, let's see, important dates and meetings. So, this is our only December meeting. Let's see, we have a budget coming up, a couple of school committee meetings in January, our meeting with town councils, and then we have budget adoption. We're fast.
And Bob alluded to it, but the meeting on January 27th, our budget workshop, has, over the past several years, been a relatively short meeting, so there was a request to have a, a separate meeting around capital prioritization, and we thought rather than schedule a new meeting, that that's a very short meeting to start with, that we could, we could do it on the same night, and then people don't need to come out for a separate evening.
It's a good idea. If I go with that? All right.
Next question? Yeah, we got to the changes in the entryway with the security at the high school. Has there been any discussion about realignment of the parking arrangements or expansion of parking, so that it's more accessible to the main entrance now?
Since the question was, has there been any discussion, the answer is yes. We haven't made any decisions yet.
So, just say, can you elaborate?
Is that something that applies to the level that it will be part of the capital prioritization, or is that something that can be managed ongoing?
We don't know yet. It's not on our, up until very recently, it has not been on our list of an ever-growing list of needs, but we do recognize that there is an issue.
Well, if I haven't said it already, the lighting changes are phenomenal, phenomenal. I don't know how to explain about that, although to say how grateful I am at all, but, you know, people are impressed with the lighting, and then the very next thing is, yep, there's no place to park. And they changed the entrance, and now I can't get anywhere near it, and there's not enough handicap parking, and I go to the wrong door all the time, and it tells me entrance six, and I don't know where entrance six is, and so you cannot with by doing a good deed, but...
We know that. We, we get a lesson in that daily.
Even here on Tuesday nights. So, just as long as some consideration is being given to realignment of the parking for all the impact and all the, all the activity that happens during and after school. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Before we go into that session, I just want to say happy holidays to our baseball audience. Enjoy your holidays. Okay, thank you. Question?
Before we do that, one quick question, this relates to the capital. Has the earth down there moved in earlier? When's that scheduled to move?
I think we own that.
I thought that part of the contract was, they took it out of here.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Yeah, please.
We have a sign off on that.
Okay. Make a reg, make a motion, regulation. Make a motion to, under executive session, under V42465, negotiations, discussions.
Second.